We're going to call the meeting to order at 6:00 P. M. Tony, do we have a quorum?
Mayor Pro Tem, we have a quorum.
Awesome, thank you. If we could all rise, Pastor Ted Pitchens, if you could lead us into vacation.
Yeah, pray with me, please. Oh, well, Father, your word tells us that we're to love one another, and this community sees that love expressed through this council to us in the highways and byways of Willow Park, and we thank you for them. Lord, they know, and we know, they have decisions to make tonight, and they need wisdom and insight and compassion, and so our prayer is that you would give them energy to do all that and do it well, to honor you and to make our lives better, so that we can serve you and love each other well. We pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
If you could lead us into the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments? No? All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda to approve the city council minutes from the regular meeting, October 22nd, 2024. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for regular meeting of October 22nd, 2024.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, discussion, action, approval of a resolution accepting a policy prohibiting the installation or use of TikTok or other prohibited technologies on city devices pursuant to Texas Senate Bill 1893. Is that you, Brian?
Pat, you want to?
Sure. At the 2023 legislative session, the legislature passed Senate Bill 1893, which obligated the city to adopt the policy. No later than 60 days after the date, a model policy was developed by the Texas DPS and the DIR. That policy came out in late September, and so we have to now adopt a policy that will prohibit TikTok and other social media applications and services, mainly the ones that the governor and DIR have identified as potential threats to governmental services. And so some of them are operated by Chinese-owned companies, Russian, and other entities that are questionable in the governor's and the DIR's minds. So this policy complies with 1893. It follows the mandates of the law, which is we have to adopt a policy that's at least similar to and based upon the model policy. And essentially, the policy, very simple, it just prohibits us from loading or keeping those technologies on any city device, and we'll have our IT department block those in using city devices. So that is the policy. Are there any questions? I'll be glad to answer.
Any questions, or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is discussion, action, for the approval of the financial report for the fourth fiscal quarter 2023. Jake, whoever.
Good evening. So this is going to be, give us the full financial year of the most recent fiscal year, ending September 30th. No major changes. I've been trying to kind of give you heads up as we've progressed each quarter and give you some projections as we've moved through the year, and so it's kind of ended up similar to the expectations. So I'll just kind of, again, run through some highlights on each of the funds, and if you have any questions, just let me know. General fund, we ended up with a surplus of about $281,000 for the year. This, you know, revenue was in line, again, with the amended budget, so by being proactive with that, we're able to stay ahead of budget on that and also help reduce, the capital expenditures were lower on the expense side, which is why we're able to have a little surplus on that. So kind of some of the planning and taking some of those capital expenditures out helped on that. Water fund, it does show, so you're seeing a deficit of $445,000. Couple reasons for that. Operating costs came in a little bit higher than anticipated, so you had some things pushing up on that. The water purchases to Fort Worth end up being about $142,000 over even the amended budget, so again, that's something we're kind of keeping an eye on there. And so it is something I'm not concerned about, and we also, looking at the current year budget, we have increased some of the expenses, line items, to make sure we're adjusting for that. So I think we've planned for that moving forward. Again, there's just some items on there that can end up coming a little higher on the expense side. The user fees were basically flat, was a little bit down from last year. Again, you had a little bit of a wetter spring, you know, so you didn't have as much of an increase on the revenue side. But overall, again, the fund is in good shape. You have 2.3 million in reserves on that, and so that's one. You've had some prior year surplus, so again, there's no concern, it's just some reasons why you had the deficit this year on that fund. Wastewater, again, you know, it shows the large surplus, but if I pull out the interest earned on some of the restricted accounts, there's some debt issuance cost on a prior issuance this year, and the inter-fund transfer from water. So if you want to look at a true operating picture, it was basically a break-even. There's a small deficit of about $50,000 in the wastewater fund. But again, kind of like I commented earlier in the year, really good news on the user fees, that those are up, and that fund should be pretty much able to stand alone next year, and so that's a good thing. The user fees were at 1.3 million, which is up 500,000 from last year, and even over the adjusted budget there. So again, all three funds really are healthy. You see some movement on each, which is going to happen year to year, but again, good reserves on each of those funds. Just some other comments, if you look at the capital expenditures, the road bond money, that's basically all been spent now, so you can kind of see the cash left in there. There is the drainage money, again, that was part of that, there's about 1.3 million from operations and the bond money. So again, if you're looking at future projects, just kind of know that's what's left there. And then on the pump station over here on Canyon Court that y'all just acquired, that land, there's about 990,000 in cash that we have earmarked from that agreement with Fort Worth to get that done. So just kind of something we'll keep an eye on as the costs come in there. But otherwise, again, you know, I think it was a good year. You look at just cash positions across the board, and all the funds are good. You know, tourism, we've hit on before, you had, you know, you're up to 630,000 in that fund. Solid waste, 420,000. So some of these, you maintain good reserves, so you can ebb and flow with some of the expenses and some of the inflation that you had on some items this year. Any questions on anything that I kind of ran through on that?
Questions for Jake? All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept financial report as presented.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All right, any final questions? All in favor? All right, thank you very much, Jake. All right, we are going to skip to item five and go into executive session. It is anticipated that all or a portion of the discussion of the foregoing items may be conducted in a closed executive session under authority of Section 551 of the Texas Open Meetings Act, including without limitation, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. In addition, closed executive session may be conducted on the items listed below. However, no action will be taken on any items discussed in closed executive session until the city council reconvenes an open session. You're ready?
Okay.
All right. Call the meeting back to order at 6:41 P. M. out of executive session. Item number four, discussion, action, consider and take action on an ordinance expanding the city of Willow Park's extraterritorial jurisdiction to include an approximately 320-acre, 21-acre tract of land owned by Bell Dean Ranch Limited, described as parts of the F. H. Hammond Survey, abstract number 673, the heirs of Francisco Sanchez Survey, abstract 2346, and HT and BRR Company Survey number five, abstract number 647, situated in Parker County, Texas, embracing all of parcel four, the 323 through 336, 1,000-acre tract described in the deed to John Henry Dean III, recorded in volume 1441, page 424, of the Official Public Records of Parker County, Texas, and further described by Meeks and Bowns. Brian.
Okay, this is the petition, the annexation petition for Mr. Bell. Pat, you want to walk us through the pieces?
This is actually the first component, which is to accept the petition from the Bell Dean Ranch Limited to expand our ETGA to include the property that will be subject to the development agreement. The law requires us to have the property in our ETG before we can enter into a development agreement with the developer. So this is the first step. It's also the first step to annexation, which is contemplated by the development agreement. So to annex property, it has to be within our ETG. So this property currently has been released from the Fort Worth ETG, and it is now in no city's ETG. So this property is within our one-mile ETG distance from our city limits, a portion of it is, and then the rest of the property is contiguous. So what Mr. Bell, on behalf of the Bell Dean Ranch Limited and the general partner, have requested us to expand our ETG to include his property in our ETG. I recommend that you pass the resolution or the ordinance, accepting that petition and including it in our ETG as set forth in your package. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Pat, are there any other things that we have to do for, to have this in our ETG?
No, there's no public hearing requirement. It just requires us to take public action at a public meeting. It requires a request, force the law, from the landowner, and this petition was submitted by the landowner who owns 100% of the property, so there are no other property owners to worry about or to provide notice to. This is a proper petition, and so this is the first step, and this is the only step we need to take that action.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Pat? Do we have a motion?
Read caption.
Please read the caption of the ordinance.
Approval of the ordinance, accepting a petition to expand the city of Willow Park's extraterritorial jurisdiction to include an approximate 321-acre tract of land owned by Bell Dean Ranch Limited as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance, accepting a petition to expand the city of Willow Park's extraterritorial jurisdiction to include an approximate 321-acre tract of land owned by Bell Dean Ranch Limited as presented.
Right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor? All right, thank you very much.
I would add, Mayor Pro Tem, for clarification, it, we actually, the property is 317 acres, but the approximate 321 is fine to say that, just so y'all know.
It's approximately 317 acres, not 321 acres.
All right, the next item is discussion, action, consider and take action on a resolution authorizing the mayor and/or Mayor Pro Tem to execute a development agreement with Bell Dean Ranch Limited regarding the development of 317 acres of land in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Willow Park.
So with us today is Mr. Bell, Robert Bell and Logan Bell with Bell Development. Would y'all like to say some words on your development and what you're thinking, and you have anything you'd like to share with the council?
Be glad to. First of all, thank you for action of getting us into the extraterritorial jurisdiction. You know, as you probably know, it wasn't just recently that we couldn't, we were kind of stuck in the city of Fort Worth extraterritorial jurisdiction, and so we're glad to be able to be able to get out of that and into Willow Park's ETG. The, I think everybody knows, I think, where the property is. This is about 317 acres at the corner of Interstate 20 and FM 1187. It's bounded by Bankhead Highway on the south. So the plan for the property, and we kind of have, I think maybe it's in your packet, kind of the conceptual plan, and I have a larger map of it, other people like to see it, but the development agreement that's before you kind of stipulates kind of what we want as the developer to be able to, for the city to be able to bring utilities to the agreement, obviously, to the development. Obviously, you can't build anything unless you got water and sewer, and then if you drive by this piece of property, you'll notice that it's not, it's not flat, and it's, and it's got some large power lines that run through the middle of it, so it's a, it's kind of a challenging piece of property. So part of the development agreement allows for a public improvement district and a TERS to be able to put in place infrastructure for streets, water, sewer, masquerading, drainage, and stuff throughout the development. I don't have really a formal presentation. Logan, you would? But I'm here to answer any questions that anybody has about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So we'll go just down the list of concerns we've been asked about. The anticipated water usage for the total development buildout is 780,000 gallons of water. Michelle, you have any comments? Are we, will we cover that? Will Nate be freaking out on the SCADA? That's the real question, okay. We're covered on wastewater as well?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. The next issue in the developers' agreement is the PID and the TERS. We had a brief, brief, not so brief, but we had a presentation about a year ago on what a PID and a TERS is and what it does. With us tonight is Jason Hughes with Hilltop Securities, Texas Tech Red Raider, West Texas kid too, so we like that. Can you walk us through, again, kind of refresh us on what a PID and a TERS is and how that's going to impact the developers' agreement?
Certainly, absolutely. So Mayor Pro Tem, members, council members, good to be here. So within the development agreement, again, there are a couple of items as it relates to the public improvement district or the PID. That PID is simply a development district, and the nice thing about that is it is created by, controlled by, administered by the city. So the city retains complete control of that PID. That PID is empowered to levy assessments. It is not a taxing entity. It does not levy water and sewer rates, nothing, other than the assessment. So within that context, those assessments can be levied, they can be used to reimburse the developer for certain public infrastructure costs, no private costs, no things like that from that PID, just simply as a pure reimbursement vehicle for public infrastructure, with the thought being that it will fund water, sewer, drainage, roads, things of that nature, and then Mr. Bell can build on top of that. So that's the PID aspect. Also included within there is a tax income reinvestment zone or a TERS, so that TERS is included in the development agreement, so that will be used to offset certain costs, things of that nature. So the nice thing about this is this is really the start is tonight, as far as approving the development agreement. All the other things related to whether it's the TERS project and finance plan, whether it's certainly the issuance of bonds by the city through the PID, all those things will be coming back to you for your ultimate approval. But again, want to be very clear, no increased taxes, no water and sewer revenues, things of that nature are tied to the PID.
So I live on Meadows, I live on Meadows Place Drive, have a wonderful neighbor next door to me. Are we going to be, will we be fitting the bill for this?
Oh, you will not. So that's the nice thing about the PIDs, is they are set up to be self-contained, right? Because they do have simply the assessment powers, no taxing powers. The assessment is only levied and can only be levied within the boundaries of that PID.
Y'all have any further questions for Jason?
Yes. Jason?
Yes, sir.
In your opinion, looking at this, is it a good deal for the city?
I think it's a good deal in the sense that it helps the city grow. It opens up some new areas of growth as well, and we've done as much as we could to, within this development agreement, to put guardrails on there, to restrict certain things, such as restricting how much debt can be placed on the properties, things of that nature. So yes, I think that what is being proposed to you tonight, based off of Mr. Bell and his development, that this is something that will be positive for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jason? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything?
You want Tony to talk about land use?
Tony, I have questions for Michelle.
So for zoning of what the Bell Development is, it is to be in line with what our current zoning is, so we don't, there isn't anything in there that was out of line with what we already are doing throughout the city or commercial. Bell Development was very careful and deliberate in selecting criteria that we already have in our city, so that that was in line with what we already are experiencing in our other neighborhoods and our other commercial developments.
This will be zone plan development district, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And what about parks? Are there?
There is about, I believe, 16 acres? There's acreage. We have trails, there are park space, so I think it's going to be beautiful once it's, everything is allocated as to where it's going, so we definitely have park space figured in there for our park plan and for continuation of several miles of trails.
Thank you. Well, I will also say, I had asked, Michelle, I think Rose put together some numbers for water and wastewater, that in looking at the, how the PID will fund what's in the development, we don't have any other expansion to the water system required, other than getting the water to the development, no additional, you know, pump stations required for the, and the wastewater, if I understand correctly, Michelle, is, only requires us to have our wastewater treatment plant to what we've already permitted?
Correct. So if y'all remember, we went out with bids originally for the 1 million, then came back to 750. We're now going to go back to the 1 million, or that is the intention at some point. We will have to upgrade a lift station to do this project, but this is figured in in the offsite costs for y'all already, and this upgrade will have to be done at some point anyway, so we're doing it now, we're just doing it a few years early.
This will also kill out a line, right?
Yes, this will also kill out the line from, we found out runs between houses that we weren't aware of previously, so.
So we have a sewer line running through people's backyards, and we don't have an easement?
No, we do have an easement, we just don't have access.
Access, got it.
Okay. Did y'all have any other questions about water or wastewater?
Are we going to have to raise water rates?
We are not. So the intention is to stick with the new gen report that they did for us two years. We are technically, we're in year two, we'll be in year three next fiscal year. The intention is to stay with that through the five years, and then we will reevaluate at that time like we would any other time.
All right, any other questions on item number five, the development agreement for any of our speakers or anyone else?
Mayor Pro Tem, I would add that the development agreement addresses annexation of the tract as well, and the extension of city services to the tract, and so that is part of the DA. I know a later on agenda item will be to approve that petition requesting annexation, as it is a voluntary petition submitted by Mr. Bell and his development.
All right, do you think you'll choose to discuss that at the later end?
I can, certainly I can discuss it now a little bit if you want to. Basically, the city anticipates we'll actually have two separate annexations. We'll annex down the Bankhead Highway to get to the Bell Dean Ranch Limited property, and then we'll have this petition, which we're accepting tonight, potentially accepting tonight, and we'll get a petition from the county to annex Bankhead. So we'll basically tie that, Bankhead is contiguous with our city limits now, so we'll build down that road to get to Mr. Bell's. The new law allows us to go down highways or roads to annex property, and that's what we're doing. And so it'll be a two-step process essentially, and culminating with completion of the annexation probably six years or so days from now. So we'll have public hearings, so the public will have input on that, and in fact, we'll have three public hearings, all of which will occur on one meeting, so we'll have three public hearings.
I did have one final question, I don't know if it's Tony. How will traffic regarding this new development be?
So there is a traffic impact analysis that will be done, and that would be from the developer standpoint of doing that, to make sure that they can allocate traffic properly in that corridor, and that would also go through text dot headlines.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's been addressed in the developers' agreement.
And that's in the developers' agreement?
Yes, ma'am.
Somebody to ask, I know the Bankhead, that's not going, annexing that is not going to affect, I assume we're not taking over repairs, the county bond to, for road repairs is still going to cover that?
Yeah, there is.
Well, we'll have to maintain it once, after the improvements are made.
After the bond.
That's correct. In fact, we'll do a services agreement with the county, our services plan, it'll talk about that, so we will have to maintain it once it's completed.
Okay. And we will coordinate with the county and their engineers for the installment of the utilities, so we're not ripping up stuff after it's been put in.
All right. Do we, would you like to read the resolution caption for the developers' agreement?
Have the motion to approve the resolution as presented, execute the developers' agreement with Bell Dean Ranch Limited, or do you want me to read it, the actual resolution again?
Well, we have a proposed resolution, a resolution of the city council of the city of Willow Park, Texas, authorizing the mayor and/or Mayor Pro Tem to execute a development agreement with Bell Dean Ranch Limited regarding approximately 321 acres of land in Parker County, Texas, located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Willow Park. So that's our proposed resolution for the developers' agreement.
I'll make, Ms. Mayor Protem, I will make a motion to approve the resolution as presented to execute a developers' agreement with Beldine Ranch Limited.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion on the developers' agreement? All in favor? All right. Thank you very much. Item number six, consider and take action on a resolution accepting an annexation petition from Beldine Ranch Limited requesting annexation of the following 300, approximately 321-acre tract of a land described as parts of the F. H. Hammond survey, abstract number 673, the heirs of Francisco Sanchez Survey, abstract number 2346, and HT and BRR Company Survey number five, abstract number 647, situated in Parker County, Texas, embracing all of parcel four, the 323 through 326 of 1,000-acre tract described in the deed to John Henry Dean III, recorded in volume 1441, page 424 of the Official Public Records of Parker County, Texas, and further described by Meets and Bates.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I'll be glad to address this. This is the item where we accept the petition from the Beldine Ranch as part of the development agreement. Beldine Ranch has submitted a petition for annexation, and we have, we will be obligated, of course, we're into a services agreement with the Beldine Ranch Limited to extend city services to the tract. We already have a, we've already kind of negotiated that as part of the development agreement. And so basically, we will accept it by resolution tonight, and that resolution will set the public hearings and authorize staff to go ahead and complete and negotiate the services agreement, consistent with the DA. We'll bring that back to you for annexation and approval of the services agreement. So this is the first step. I think we have it set up in the resolution. We'll have a public hearing on January 14th of 2025 is when we're anticipated to do it. The reason we had it that far out is we don't know exactly when the county meets next to get their petition, but we should have plenty of time. We just have to have 10 days' notice in the paper of the public hearing. So, but that is the first step, is we accept the petition by that resolution and start the process. So I recommend approval of the resolution as contained in your package.
Real quick, Pat, I confirmed with one of the council members' wives who happened to work for the county.
Hi.
They meet on November 25th.
Yes, that's when I saw it on their agenda. So that's when we anticipate we'll get them to approve the petition.
The caption for the resolution proposed is a resolution accepting a petition from property owner Beldine Ranch Limited requesting annexation of approximately 321-acre tract of land, setting a time, date, and place for a public hearing on the proposed annexation, directing city staff to prepare and negotiate an annexation services agreement with the property owner pursuant to section 43.0672 of the Texas Local Government Code, and consistent with the terms and conditions contained in the development agreement between the city of Willow Park and Beldine Ranch Limited, and authorizing and directing the city secretary at the city of Willow Park to publish notice of such public hearing. So that is our proposed resolution for the annexation. Do we have any questions or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented, accepting a petition to annex an approximate 321-acre tract of land owned by Beldine Ranch Limited as presented.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor. Thank you very much. Item number seven, discussion action for a resolution of the city of Willow Park, Texas, accepting a petition seeking the creation of the Beldine Ranch Public Improvement District within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, and calling for a public hearing for the city council's December 10th, 2024, meeting.
I'll be glad to take that, Mayor Protem. Yeah, this is part of the, as we discussed, the development agreement contemplates the creation of a PID. We've received a proper petition from Beldine Ranch Limited requesting that we create a PID. And so this is the resolution that will start the process. We have to have a public hearing, and that public hearing will take place on December 10th of this year. And so therefore, we recommend that we approve this resolution.
All right. The resolution is resolution by the City Council of the city of Willow Park, Texas, accepting a petition concerning the creation of a public improvement district, finding the petition to be compliant with applicable laws, approving and authorizing the mailing and publication of notice of a public hearing regarding the possible creation of a public improvement district, and resolving other matters in connection therewith. Do we have any questions or discussion on the proposed resolution or a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution, accepting the petition filed by the landowner requesting the creation of the Beldine Ranch Public Improvement District, and calling for a public hearing to consider the creation of such district at the city council's December 10th, 2024, meeting, and direct staff at the city and the city team to publish and mail notice related to such public hearing.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? All right. Thank you very much. Item number eight, to amend the financial advisory agreement with Hilltop Securities to provide for amended forms and basis of compensation for PID-related activities.
Mayor Protem, members, what we're requesting is just the amendment to our contract. Whenever we had provided that, what was not contemplated was development district type work, like what we're talking about tonight. So we request that that is a different fee structure, because it's, again, secured differently than the COs like what you have in agenda item 10. Having said that, all of these are self-contained within the PID bond issues. Is that another way our fees that's specific to the PID bond issues are paid out of the PID bond issues? So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about that.
Any questions for Jason? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended services contract with Hilltop Securities as presented.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussions or questions? All in favor? All right. Thank you very much. Item number nine, to enter into a sales tax allocation agreement with ESD-1.
Yes. Chief Watson's also here. He may have some comments on this. But so when we annex this property, assuming we fulfill all the agreements, the sales tax is actually allocated in two different parts. 1.5% goes to ESD-1, and 0.5% goes to Parker County. And so obviously, the city of Willow Park is not in that equation. There was a referendum proposition that was passed in 2021, which carried roughly 61% of the vote. That allowed the ESD to have a sales tax authority in unincorporated areas, which is what this is. So to make this financially plausible for the city, we immediately discussed or started negotiating with ESD to do a sales tax agreement. They have graciously offered to share 50% of the 1.5% to the city of Willow Park. Would you like to make any comments on that?
Good evening. Steven Watson, Fire Chief for ESD-1. So we fully understand that while the city is relieved of the cost of fire protection, you also need to realize some return on your investment to grow the city. And we also need you to do that in order to grow our district. So we're very happy to work cooperatively with the city of Willow Park on this development and future development if it comes. And it's been great working with your staff so far, and we appreciate your forward-looking direction of you as a council and your administration. It brought a future for us working together. Great partnership so far. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Chief?
We have this on our agenda coming up next Thursday for our fourth commission for their consideration, I expect. But it should go as soon as we can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. I do want to share one of the, so I'm very hesitant to say that Patrick Lawler does anything well, mainly because he'll tell you about it. But one of the things that he does exceptionally well is he analyzes sales tax. And so I asked him to take the term sheet that we have, and then try to kind of give us an estimate of what he thinks sales tax is going to generate. ESD sales tax, that's us and Chief Watson, so this number is going to Willow Park. Years one through five, $4,011,000. Years six through...
That's not per year.
Not per year, the years one through five.
That's our cut.
That, yes. Sorry, let me start. Cumulatively, for years one through five, the city can expect $4,011,000. In the years six through 10, it's estimated we can receive $8,429,000. That's through that next five-year period. That's not per year, that's kind of divided out. To give you an idea of what we collected this year, we collected $2 million total for the city of Willow Park. So this is a significant, significant increase in sales tax to the city of Willow Park.
Any other questions for Brian or Chief Watson? Do we have a motion?
On the, on the term of the allocation agreement, right now, the agreement provides 20 with a 10-year renewal, is that correct?
I believe that's what's in the, is that...
And we would really like to, Mr. Watson, to go with 20. We end up having to do a 40-year payout on our TERS. And so to kind of backstop that, just to make sure, obviously, you probably won't be there in 40 years. I won't either. Like to be, but I don't know if I'll make it that long. But anyway, if you could see fit to sponsor that, we'd really appreciate it.
Chief Watson, it's section five in the agreement.
Yes.
Is the term.
So, can't see the...
[laughing]
And the agreement's written as like an automatic renewal. So I, I mean, I think it's our position that, it's our intention at this point, and I don't, I don't know that any of us will be here after the first point here, but that this would be an ongoing sharing. So I think the original version that was written was 10 and 10. And with understanding that the city's making utility and construction investments and that kind of thing, we proposed the 20 and 10. So if, you know, if you approve, if you approve the 2020, that's, I can take it back to our board and our general counsel and see what we come up with. So, and I think we've got some time. I mean, we're not going to be realizing sales tax revenue there for a bit yet, so we've got some time to hash out the details that we need.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Pat, how would we word that in here?
I would just say to move to approve the sales tax allocation agreement with the ESD number one with a 20-year base term and 20-year renewal.
Got it. Ms. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to accept the ESD sales tax agreement with a term of 20 years, with a 20-year renewal, as presented.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other questions for Pat, Chief Watson, Brian, for discussion? All in favor? All right. Thank you very much. Item number 10, consider all matters incident and related to the issuance and sale of City of Willow Park, Texas, combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation Series 2024A, including the adoption of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of such certificates in the amount not to exceed $5,135,000 to finance the cost of paying contractual obligations to be incurred for constructing, acquiring, purchasing, renovating, enlarging, equipping, and improving water and wastewater system, properties, or facilities, including the acquisition of land and rights of way, therefore, and professional services rendered in connection with such projects and the financing thereof. Jason?
I'm reminded of that line in the old Ray Stevens song, "It's me again, Margaret." This is my last time to get up, but I'll make it brief. So we did price the certificates of obligation for the city today. What we're asking for your approval tonight, the final par amount, $5,90,000. That does get you $5 million in project proceeds funds. 3.5 million of that is for wastewater, 1.5 million of that is for water. So 4.262% is the final interest rate. That was over a 30-year term. The nice thing about that is that is fixed. So it's set. We do have a call date in there, so if interest rates go down in the future, or if you have excess funds, then either A, wanted to refinance the debt, much like you refinance your home mortgage, or pay it off outright, you, the city, solely retain that flexibility. So with that, again, be happy to go into any more detail. If you do approve, what will happen is it'll go down to the Attorney General's Office. I'll let Kristin talk about that in just one second. And then December 12th would be closing, and that's when you would receive those full funds, again, $5 million. So happy to go through more on the finance side as you like. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Kristin, and she can let you know what you're going to agree to.
Can you briefly, go ahead?
I have a question, Jason. If we pay off early, is there a penalty to pay it off early?
There is no penalty to do that. There is roughly a 10-year call in there. So effectively, what we have told investors is they have the bonds or the certificates of obligation for that period of time. Anytime thereafter, you can take it out. So it gives them a little bit of protection, but there is no penalty for it.
Thank you. The, can you talk about the terms, the repayment terms, especially the first couple of years?
Sure. So the way that it was structured, just knowing that we have these improvements to make, these are for, again, water and wastewater, we actually structured it with interest only for a three-year period, principal thereafter. And the nice thing about that is it is leveled thereafter. There's no rising or ascending debt service or anything like that. It's very conservatively structured. Upon full kind of stabilization and principal repayment, it's about $320,000 per year.
Okay. Any other questions for Jason?
I'll turn it over to Kristin here.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Protem, council. It's a pleasure to be here. Again, I'm Kristin Savanna with Norton Rose Fulbright, and we have the pleasure of serving as the bond council. So the ordinance that you have before you will take care of all the necessary functions associated with issuing the certificates of obligation. So it authorizes the COs of the par amount that Jason just mentioned, the $5,900. So the caption that you read was the not-to-exceed amount. That was the notice amount. Provides for all of the necessary terms, the principal and interest payment dates, the redemption provisions that y'all discussed. And then it also, of course, levies a tax in support of the certificates, but I understand these will be, are expected to be self-supporting. It also pledges the surplus net revenues of the water and sewer system. So it's structured so that if there are sufficient net revenues in, you know, in the interest and sinking fund, then there's no tax that's levied. But again, just kind of touching on the key points, it authorizes a bond purchase agreement with Raymond James. So they are the underwriter, the purchaser of the obligations. And it approves the official statement. So that is the offering document to the market. That's what your staff reviewed on your behalf, and hopefully you've had a chance to review that as well. And then it does have just certain requirements. These are tax-exempt obligations. So there's a couple of pages on the tax covenants that the city agrees to, as well as the continuing disclosure obligations of the city. So in connection with all of your outstanding debt, the city agrees to file certain annual financial information, as well as notices for certain events where they to occur. So it's a securities law requirement that the underwriters are obligated to enter into with the city in order to market the bonds. Just procedurally, our firm, on the city's behalf, will file a transcript of proceedings with the Attorney General's Office. So all public securities in Texas needs to get the AG's approval. So we'll submit that to them, and then we'll also work through the closing requirements that the underwriter, Raymond James, again, has as part of the bond purchase agreement, so that we're in a position to close. December 12th is our closing date. Happy to answer any questions. It's a 30-page document, but, you know, it's similar to all of the other debt obligations that you've entered into. But I'm happy to answer any questions. questions regarding procedure or the ordinance itself.
Any questions for Krista?
For me.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, if you would, read the caption.
The motion would be to approve all matters incident and related to the issuance and sale of City of Willow Park, Texas, combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation Series 2024A, including the adoption of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of such certificates in the amount not to exceed $5,135,000 to finance the cost of paying contractual obligations to be incurred for constructing, excuse me, constructing, acquiring, purchasing, renovating, enlarging, equipping, and improving water and wastewater system properties or facilities, including the acquisition of land and rights of way therefore, and professional services rendered in connection with such projects and financing thereof.
Great, you have a motion from Tony. I'll read the caption for the ordinance. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Willow Park, Texas, combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation Series 2024A, providing for the payment of said certificates of obligation by the levy of an ad valorem tax upon all taxable property within the city, and a pledge of the surplus net revenues derived from the operation of the city's combined waterworks and sewer system, providing the terms and conditions of such certificates, and resolving other matters incident and relating to the issuance, payment, security, sale, and delivery of said certificates, including the approval and execution of a paying agent, registrar agreement, purchase agreement, and the approval and distribution of an official statement, and providing an effective date. So I've read the caption, Tony has read a proposed motion. Any questions, or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any other questions or discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you very much. And that is the end of the agenda.
City manager comments?
Yes.
Yeah, any council comments?
Yes.
It's not on the agenda, Pat, but we can just do some comments real quick?
Absolutely.
Information, okay, go ahead.
Any comments from any of the council members?
I just want to thank staff for all the work they put into all this effort, and you, of course, and the mayor, and Mayor Protem, so thank you very much for all the effort in this, so, great job.
I'll follow up with that, saying the same thing. You know, it didn't happen overnight, it's been a long, drawn-out process, and there's always new questions coming up, and as they get answered, there's more questions, but I'm glad we're where we're at now, this is great.
Yes, I would, I have several comments. First, regarding this agreement, thank you very much to Robert and Logan Bell for working with us for months to come up with a developers' agreement that we feel is beneficial to you as a developer and to the city. I think we could not be more excited to have Bell come into our city. It's a testament to our staff and our contractors, everybody that worked on this, how smoothly this process has gone, so I appreciate all that work. I would also like to say on some other issues, I want to say thank you to David Allen, who organized Veterans Memorial yesterday and got some of our citizens out to enjoy that, and I very much appreciate your efforts there. I also want to say thank you, we had a Parks Town Hall a couple of weeks ago, and wonderful response from our citizens, got some feedback that we'll be putting together a couple of surveys to help us decide what we want to do with our parks. One of the wonderful things we had there, David Allen was there at that meeting with KJ. We got feedback that our Veterans Memorial Park, people really like it where it is. So I think we're going to have a wonderful effort from some citizens getting together, creating an ideas for improving that and making a really special Veterans Memorial Park, and I can't wait for future Veterans Day to see where we go with that. So just wanted to say thank you to all of our citizens for getting involved in that. So I will turn my comments to Brian.
First of all, I want to thank Robert and Logan. These two men have, they've been steadfast in their commitment to Willow Park. I remember vividly when Robert called me and said, "We want to be in Willow Park," mainly because it was Heather's birthday. But you've been a great person to work with, you and your team, even Rick. Y'all have been, y'all have been a wonderful team to work with. I can't imagine a developer working with the city and understanding the city's needs, and understanding our position, our point of view, as much as Robert has. He is definitely a hands-on developer. He does not farm a lot of things out, and so it makes it really, really nice to work with a professional development firm that when they tell you they're going to do it, they do it. And thank you so much for your professionalism through this entire process. Logan, thank you as well. Logan's the design expert, that's, I don't know if that's true or not, but y'all should see some of the stuff he's designed. We're going to have some really, really, really well-built, well-designed, and just, quite frankly, cool stuff here in Willow Park, and that's going to be because of these two men sitting right here. I made a comment to staff, I still think it's true, this development completely changes the trajectory of Willow Park. I think when the history of Willow Park is written, there'll be three phases. It'll be the initial phase, it'll be the work of Marcy Galley and Gene Martin and Naverdowski and Greg, when they did the original TERS in 2016 with, with the Wilkes Development. That absolutely put Willow Park on the map. And then I think the next chapter will be written with the Belle development, and I think that's going to be probably the most significant development we're going to see in Willow Park. None of this happens overnight, and so there's a few people I do want to specifically mention. Bill Funderburke, you probably don't see his name a lot on the documents. Bill has been the steady force behind this whole thing. Bill's, he's a wise old man who's sitting in the corner of the room, who would sit there and say, "Brian, that's the dumbest thing I've ever heard." And so I appreciate Bill, his wisdom and his experience and his guidance through this. Michelle Gelker, every time we threw multiple scenarios of water and wastewater and different plans and concepts, Michelle just didn't flinch and came back and said, "This is workable, we need to work on this, you might want to do this." And so she's done a tremendous job with that. Mandy, Chelsea, Andy, y'all, they've come in late in the process, but they have been very supportive of this, whether it be running analysis, make a copy, whatever, they've been, they've been very, very supportive in this. Jake Weber, I love running the financial analysis by him. He's not part of the staff, but we've adopted him. We gave him a little office spec over here, that's a broom closet. But Jake is tremendous, he's a great asset for the city. But finally, the one person who's been the rock through this whole thing is Tony Fisher. I don't know if this happens if Tony Fisher is somewhere else. She initiated this whole process with Robert Bell a year and a half ago, probably. She's the one who reached out. She's the one who reached out when I said, "You're crazy." And she said, "Well, we're going to find out." We're not having this meeting tonight with these agenda items if it's not for Tony Fisher. And everybody in the building knows, knows how I feel about that, I wanted to state it publicly. Thank you for everything you've done, the long hours you've put in, and the hard work you've done. And so from, from me, I appreciate it greatly.
Thank you. All right, one final comment, I would like to thank Mayor Moss. He was a big part of this process.
Yes.
He was here all the way. I am very sad that he could not be here tonight for the start. He will be around for some of the finishing annexations and that process, but he set up a team that I think has worked really well, so I think, thank you, Doyle. And with that, unless there's any other comments or questions, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move the adjournment.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor? All right.